Welcome, everyone. I call the October 15, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold three separate public hearings on the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA Categorical Exemption Threshold Amendments, the 2025 Miscellaneous Code Amendments, Basel Municipal Code 12, and the Middle Housing Code Amendments. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question function is not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Please note that City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please note that we also, okay. If you wish to make comments on the three items scheduled for public hearing, please make those comments during the specific hearing so that they will be part of the public hearing record. Also, as we're in an election season, I'd like to remind everyone of certain campaign-related restrictions regarding public comment on campaigns and/or ballot measures. Public speakers generally cannot specifically address a campaign or ballot measure at a public meeting or during the public comment period. RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits government agencies from allowing the use of public facilities either directly or indirectly for campaign purposes. Allowing speakers to speak in favor of or in opposition to a ballot measure or campaign during a public meeting would violate this prohibition. Public comment will be allowed, both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets. The Imagine Bothell notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for making comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck is absent and excused. Commissioner Lever?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Sills?
Here.
And Commissioner Augustafson is absent and excused. A little lonely up here. At this, also, I'd like to recognize community development staff in attendance include Deputy Director Gates. Deborah Powers, planner, is she here? Sure, okay. Ray Souza will also be here, okay? And Jaclyn Sampson, planner. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone each time when you're not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, during specific breaks during the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by using the raise hand function on Zoom. I will call on you as I see you, and this will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. We did receive one written comment regarding the item subject to hearing. Anything else? No? Are there any, anyone in the audience want to speak on something not subject to hearing? Well, do the hearing comments later. And are there any Zoom commenters out there, again, wishing to speak to items not subject of hearing? Seeing no indication of such, we'll close the public comment item and move on to the approval of the September, October 3rd minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioners? Commissioner Robson?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes. Any discussion around those minutes? Looking at my remote, commissioners, I see none. So, all in favor of approving the minutes of the previous meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved unanimously. We will then move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing is a Critical Area Ordinance update and SEPA Categorical Exemption Threshold amendments. I'll open the hearing right now, and staff will make a brief presentation to begin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Sampson, and I will be presenting on the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA update, the findings, conclusions, recommendation, as well as the public hearing. So, for Planning Commission's action today, Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and consider info on the proposed draft findings, conclusions, and recommendations for the Critical Areas Ordinance and SEPA threshold updates, and either approve, approve with provisions, or deny. The final recommendation from the Planning Commission will then be provided to City Council. So, some background information. So, in accordance with the GMA, the city is now required to complete its next update by the end of the year, so December 31, 2025. So, we started our efforts in December 2024 with FAWCOP preparing their gap analysis for the city. We then had our first initial study session with Planning Commission back in July 16 of this year. And throughout September and October, we have met with both Planning Commission and City Council with different study sessions in order to create the draft code for the Critical Areas Ordinance, as well as the SEPA thresholds. Staff wanted to update council with two new recommended changes to the code since you've last seen the draft code. Due to the limited time we've had to go through these updates, we're just going to show you the two that we have proposed for today. The first update is going to be within the Geologically Hazardous Areas code. So, after speaking with Public Works, they believe that the CAO update would be a good time to edit the Critical Areas Ordinance code to align better with their practices. So, staff removed the erosion hazards area or land with a 15% or more slope from needing a Critical Areas permit or Critical Areas report. Landslide hazard areas or 40% or more slope still require a cap and a CAR. Public Works currently does not require a cap or CAR for erosion hazard areas and hasn't for a long time. This is because these parcels require, these parcels already require to give the city soil information, as well as most parcels in the city actually have a 15% or more slope, but not up to the 40% or landslide hazard slope. So, this next slide, this is a snippet of the city. This is north of downtown, but the yellow represents erosion hazard areas, and the orange is landslide hazard areas. So, as you can see, a lot of the city has yellow in it. So, if we were to require erosion hazardous areas, to require a Critical Areas permit or a Critical Areas report, that would be the majority of projects coming in. So, Public Works has not required it for a while, so we just wanted to have the code reflect what Public Works practices. So, our recommendation would be to amend the CAO code to match their practices and remove the erosion hazardous areas from needing a cap or a CAR. And landslide hazard areas will continue to need a cap and a CAR. The next suggestion we have is editing our draft proposal for our riparian management zones. So, staff have edited the draft CAO code to adjust the previously proposed F-stream riparian management zones, which from 125 feet with the ability to adjust to 100 feet with a vegetative buffer, to 175 feet with the ability to adjust to 150 feet with a vegetative buffer. This adjustment was initiated after examining what other jurisdictions are doing. We are all working simultaneously to meet the December 31st deadline, so therefore, we haven't had much clarity on what peer communities have been doing until now. So, now that we're seeing our previously proposed buffer areas are much lower than what other cities are doing, so we wanted to match that. Along with that, WDFW did not support our previous proposed buffers. Therefore, we propose to follow more peer communities and adjust the F-streams to what you see on the blue. This is in order to balance best practice, best available science, and state laws that give us the ability to depart from BIS and recognizing our built environment and our policies. So, increasing the F-streams to create more balance with what, with what WDFW commented. So, I have a couple maps to show you all. So, there are only 12 F-streams within the city of Bothell limits, and all 12 of those streams also have associated wetland buffers. So, while we would adjust the width to 175 feet, all these F-streams with their associated wetlands, they are an extensive network of streams in our high habitat scores, therefore, we don't really see a difference with a buffer at this new proposed size and encumbered parcels with the riparian management zones. So, as you can see here, we have these, one, two, three, eight F-streams. And then, in the next slide here, in the circles, we tried to kind of match it up to what they are, but you can see in those kind of bluish-green striped areas, that's where the wetlands are. So, they are along those F-streams. Again, here, we have the Greensboro Creek, as well as this F-stream on the right, and they are within those wetland areas as well. And then, we have Wayneeta Creek as well as an F-stream. So, based on these two changes, we are asking Planning Commission's recommendation how to move forward. So, we want to stop here and see if City Council has any, or Planning Commission has any questions on these two proposed changes that we have.
All right, commissioners, questions for staff on the proposed changes?
Hello, Commissioner Lever here?
Yes, Commissioner Lever.
Thank you. I just had a chance to review the comment that came through, and I think, I think I heard you say that some of the changes align with the concerns. Can, can you, can you confirm that since I haven't read the comment yet, since we just got it?
The, the comment that was received today was focused primarily on the reasonable use exception section, the updates in there. This is just about the stream buffer width that, that we're, we're adjusting based on Fish and Wildlife's comments, as well as the fact that there, that the majority of these are encumbered by wetlands that have, wetlands that, or buffers that go beyond the stream buffer that we're, we're recommending could go up to. So, no, they don't have any relationship between the comment that was received today and, and this, this, this change, which we do, we apologize, we recognize that it's, it's late in the process, but we are learning, as Jaclyn mentioned, on the fly as other jurisdictions are moving through this, as we digest the comments from Fish and Wildlife or others. But no, no relation between the comment received today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other commissioner, questions or comments? So, what I heard is that you're making this change to be consistent with recommendations from Fish and Wildlife, and that, given the overlap between the stream buffer and the wetlands, the overall impact of it will be relatively minor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? So, pausing, no. Given the lack of further questions, I think we can go with that the commission supports this change. And you can move forward.
Great. Thank you. So, on this slide, we have, oh, and then we can open the public hearing up now, before we do the findings and conclusions.
Okay. Actually, I thought I did open it.
No, we can pause with these discrete changes to allow for public comment. And then, the other slides we have are just the findings, conclusions, and recommendations that we figured you'd want to have on the screen to, to kind of run through.
Yes, yes.
So, we're at that point where we're.
So, this concludes the staff presentation, and we will then move to public comment. So, I believe there is one individual in the audience who'd like to make a comment. Is that correct? Yes. Please step up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. You're going to manage my three-minute clock? Okay, so you've got the light, yellow will indicate you're close, and red, you'll be at your limit. So, please proceed. Oh, you've got to push the button to, we'll restart your three minutes till your red light is on. There you go.
Oh, thank you. My name's Todd Johnson. I represent LMJ Enterprises that owns property in the area. We are at an address 18700 120th Avenue Northeast, and we have an adjacent vacant piece of property. That's the subject of our comment letter that was submitted, and I'm a little confused myself as to all this, so. But we're looking specifically at Table 1404-140B-1H, the maximum disturbance area. And the way that we're looking at this is that it could have a significant impact to development opportunities on our vacant piece of property. So, we currently have a, a wetland on the property, which we've respected, and we're very much about keeping that wetland intact. Unfortunately, there's also a very low-grade wetland, there are ones across, diagonally across the property, and that's the one that we've been working with city staff and with environmental consultants to try to purchase wetland credits and, and move that off-site and develop the property. The way we're reading this table is it's in direct conflict with the zoning code, which requires minimum densities on that, on our property. And if we took those, that table and applied it to our property, at the same time we have these minimum density requirements, basically, no development could happen because the table seems to suggest that you can't do a development of more than 10,000 square feet, but on a commercial basis, we, we are not allowed to do, do a development less than 50,000 square feet or a .5 FAR over a site that's approximately 100,000 square feet. And if we went the residential route, it requires something in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 units, which, as you can imagine, you couldn't do 50, 60, 50 or 60 units, that would be a total of less than 10,000 square feet. So, the way we're interpreting it is that it's completely keeping us from doing any kind of development, and it seems to us that it's using a sledgehammer where a scalpel would be better used. And there's a current code in place under reasonable use that we've been working with that we believe provides that scalpel, and it gives us adequate protections to make sure that if a development is done, it's done respecting all the wetlands appropriately. So, we.
I can't hear anything, sorry.
It's flashing yellow. Does that mean it's over?
No.
Oh. You had a few more. Just in conclusion, I know that there was a lot of comments by staff, and I really appreciate it. I know a lot of hard work goes into this stuff, that there's really no impact. We think there is an impact, but it might be a miscommunication, so we'd like to investigate that further and give an opportunity for that to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Any additional comments from the audience? Oh, seeing none, any Zoom comments?
Nobody in the Zoom.
Nobody in Zoom.
Nobody in the Zoom audiences raised their hand, no.
They're all distracted. So, with that, staff have any response to the issues raised?
Staff can connect with, with the individual offline, definitely go through and make sure there aren't any, that we can clarify where we're at, just to make sure we've got the address right, so we understand what the concerns are. And this is, this is our first public hearing. We'll have a public hearing with City Council. The decision has not been made. This is the, the process for Planning Commission to move this portion of it forward.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll connect.
All right. Appreciate it if you could let us know how that goes at our subsequent meeting. So, thank you. So, seeing no further public comments, I will close the hearing. And now is the time for the commission to deliberate on this and look at our findings, conclusions, and recommendations. And again, to follow up on the comment, I would urge you to take advantage of the opportunity that staff has said they would offer to clarify this, and you'll have a second bite at the apple when this goes before the council. So, you'll be able to express concern if you still have that concern. Okay? So, findings, conclusions, and recommendations.
Okay, so, on the screen right now, you can see our draft findings, just a snippet of it. The actual document can be found as attachment two. So, as you can see, a lot of amendments to 1402, as well as 1404. So, I wanted to open it up to council. Are there any edits that you have for the findings part of the document?
And for those following along in the agenda packet, this is starting at page 47. So, commissioners, and again, I'll try to only say this once, since we have three findings, conclusions, and recommendations, but this is our opportunity to speak directly to council regarding the work we've done on this, regarding recommendations we have, and keep that in mind as we go through it. So, the findings, they're pretty factual in nature. Any comments there? Talks about the history, the location, and the proposed action. Not seeing any from commissioners. Also talks about the meetings we've had, and there have been more than a few. Public notice, which has been given, and the review, which this has undergone with Department of Commerce and SEPA review. Comments there? Not seeing any comments from commissioners. Okay, do you want to pull up the conclusions?
Yeah. So, right here, we have our conclusions. In summary, the Critical Areas Ordinance and the SEPA threshold updates have gone through full process, drafted, noticed, and reviewed by the public and considered by public, by Planning Commission. These updates help keep Bothell's code consistent with state laws like the Growth Management Act and the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. They also provide clear standards and expectations for development and environmental protections, and these updates support the community's health, safety, and welfare. Does Planning Commission have any edits to this?
Commissioner Jones?
As is Commissioner Jones. I just have a question, and it is related to the conclusions and whether I could support the conclusions. I know that staff is going to get in touch with the person who provided the public comments to talk about their specific property, but could staff speak in general to the, to whether or not the changes in that table are in alignment with the Growth Management Act and the Bothell Comprehensive Plan that we approved, or if they anticipate any impacts to possible development, recognizing that different lots are going to have different sizes, different characteristics, all of these things, they are, they have unique features, but if they could speak to it to help me understand what seemed to be a significant concern from one of, one of our members?
Yeah, I can speak to the, the, the comment on, specifically about the reasonable use exception provisions. So, reasonable use is a, is a tool when a site is generally, it's.
What happened to audio issues with cutting in and out? And your boxes are flashing. I'm not sure what that means.
There we go. Audio just cut out for a second. So, reasonable use is the tool for a site that's completely encumbered with, with wetlands, streams, and their associated buffers to, to establish the opportunity to develop it. So, we would have to look at the specific considerations for a site. If it's, if it only has wetlands or wetland buffers or associated buffers from a critical area that extend a portion of the way across the lot, it's not fully encumbered. There's still development potential and, and room or area to, to build out within. The reasonable use exception was recommended by, by Facet in the gap analysis study, supported by Fish and Wildlife, to create a maximum disturbance area to limit how much of the wetland. And typically, it isn't into the, the wetland or its, or its, you know, buffer creating permanent impacts, limit how much disturbance would take place in, in that area. And so, trying to establish something that is reasonable, looking at peer communities, and the 3,000-square-foot sort of base, which can be increased, whether it's residential or commercial, is, is what we've seen in other jurisdictions that have that currently. Again, there are other cities that are going through this process right now, so we, we don't have all of the data from what everyone's settling on, but everybody is proposing something around this realm. Another key thing to think through is when we're talking about sites that may have a maximum, or sorry, a minimum floor area ratio or a minimum density, that density is calculated based on the land that is outside of the critical area or its buffer. So, if it's, if it's a 10-acre site, but it, the whole thing is encumbered, it has zero development. There's no, there's no maximum, therefore, there's no minimum. So, that's where reasonable use comes in, to create this opportunity to allow for, you know, a small, small footprint and, and create, you know, as much floor space above that as possible, so the, the overall permanent impacts to the critical area is, is mitigated there.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Lever, you have more?
Thank you. I just want to echo my gratitude for all the work that's gone into this project. I just want to sort of like, for the record, like, remind ourselves how difficult it is to convey these changes to the community, as it relates to the technical nature of it. So, I believe that the two changes, I fully support them, clearly they are based on science and best practice, but it, it just adds to that layer of mistrust sometimes when it comes to planning issues that are going to impact the daily lives of the community as developments start happening here. So, I just wish, and this is something that not only happens in this space, but in government in general, that we could have a different way of conveying this very technical, complex information in a way that can be processed and, and digested easier. So, as you are kind of planning on moving forward to the next phase with City Council, perhaps one of, and I don't know if you post the presentations, because I know the packet is not included, but again, just another way that this can be communicated in a level that can be understood, to mitigate that fear and, and the, the idea that we are just kind of here, like, approving things that are going to change the character of the neighborhood, or that are completely going to sort of go against the values of the community, which I know that's not the case, and we are really trying to balance all the competing priorities with the current environment. And I definitely feel very overwhelmed with the technicality of it, and I just kind of wonder, like, for people who are not coming to the space all the time like we are, it just becomes even more of a barrier. So, again, thank you for all the work, and I just really would love to think more about how this can be conveyed in a way that can be better understood for the community.
Other commissioner comments? So, I, a question, the. So I a question, the commenter raised the issue about wetland banking. Said low value wetland looking to offset potential loss with offsite wetland banking. Does this do these changes in any way affect that?
We we have within the code currently, and there were some minor adjustments to offsite mitigation opportunities when onsite is not possible. There's a there's a metric to go through. You've got to first do it onsite. If you if if there's no room because it's a really small site, there's absolutely no possibility. Then you look immediately offsite, potentially in the right of way on an adjacent property. Then you go to within the, you know, you kind of move further and further away. And if there is an offsite mitigation bank, such as the Keller Farm mitigation bank site over in Redmond, that is some that is a regional mitigation bank that jurisdictions have utilized to say, well, if it really can't fit here, let's make sure that we're we're getting the the best bang for our buck with the work that was done there wrapped up in twenty nineteen or so and has been utilized, you know, when when necessary. So I'd have to look into the specifics of this site that the gentleman was talking about, and I'll connect with them. I gave my contact info to do so.
Well, my my more general question was the do these changes affect the ability that had been there prior to use that offsite mitigation when appropriate? When you work your way through?
No, we clarified more so in in the code when you can utilize offsite. Because we were we were running into the the issue with with projects where either a site, somebody thought they could, but they didn't go through that mitigation sequencing of make sure it's onsite. So we we made sure that was clear so that the the very last opportunity to to run something offsite is now very, very clear that there's a bank to consider.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I have another comment. I'm looking at our package with the conclusions, and there were three bullets. And you have your four that appears that the new one is they provide clearer standards and expectations for development and environmental protection. I like that. Will the findings that we have been revised to include that?
Yeah, we can include that into the findings or the conclusion.
Okay. Yeah, because again, in the agenda package, we did have the findings, conclusions and recommendations. And that specific language is not there, and I do like that. So thank you for adding it. Any other comments around the conclusions? Seeing none, we will move to the recommendation, which is fairly straightforward and simple.
Yeah, so here's a recommendation on the screen. So based upon these findings and conclusions in the entire record, the planning commission recommends the city council adopt the proposed critical areas ordinance and SEPA threshold code updates as exhibit A to these findings, conclusions and recommendation. So open up to y'all if you have any edits to the recommendation.
Any discussion around that recommendation? Staring here at my screen, seeing none. So unless there is any further discussion around the findings, conclusions and recommendations, is there a motion to adopt those findings, conclusions, recommendations? Again, as modified with that new point that was on the screen, is there a motion? Commissioner Jones.
I'll move to adopt the findings, conclusions and recommendations with the modification that we learned about today on the screen.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Come on.
Commissioner Sills, I second that.
All right. Commissioner Sills seconds. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the findings, conclusions and recommendations with the new third bullet as presented on the screen. Any further discussion around that motion? Seeing none, and I'm gonna go by commissioner on this because it is rather important, ending the the hearing. Commissioner Jones.
Are we voting now?
Yes, we're voting. There were no further comments. Voting on the motion to approve the findings, conclusions and recommendations. And I'm going to go member by member, given the significance of forwarding these to council. So Commissioner Jones?
I.
Commissioner Lever?
I.
Commissioner Robson?
I.
Commissioner Sills?
I.
And I vote I as well. So the findings, conclusions and recommendations are passed unanimously as discussed this evening in the meeting. Thank you very much for your work on this. It's a significant action and we look forward to seeing it moved through council.
Thank you. Here's the next slide for next steps. So we have a proposed October twenty first city council public hearing. However, we may change this to December just to give them more time to look over the code updates or the draft code updates. And then we will, if that were to happen, then we'll address the final ordinance date accordingly. Otherwise, these are the days that we have currently right now. And with that, we already did the planning commission public hearing. So that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. That closes the public hearing on the critical area ordinance update and SEPA categorical exemption threshold amendments. Our next item is a second public hearing on the twenty twenty five miscellaneous code amendments. I'll open the hearing on that and invite staff to give a brief presentation.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I want to take a quick moment to to introduce a new planner with the department. This is Deborah Powers. She began with the department last month. She'll be taking over this project after after tonight, taking it through city council through the final steps. You're also going to see a a lot of her when it comes to the urban forest master plan. Deb comes with a lot of experience as a planner in Kirkland, Edmonds. She's worked in the in the private sector as well with Facet, helping other jurisdictions develop codes around urban forestry. And and she brings in extensive knowledge to to that topic. But just wanted to to give you a face to the name on the screen. I'm going to run through all these these quick slides here for the for the staff, staff side of things. But we're we're excited to have Deb on board. So rinse and repeat, here we go. Tonight, planning commission hold a public hearing and consider the findings, conclusions and recommendations where you can approve, approve with revisions or deny those. That'll be carried forward to city council. The miscellaneous code amendments, we've gone through this before. There's a series of these primarily, they are all clarifications, consistencies and cleanups. So these are these are all the code amendments that we find, that we have found through administration of the comprehensive plan updates, the work that you all put in last year with the comp plan policies and the zoning code amendments in December. Through code application, questions from applicants and just general digging through the code, we find inconsistencies. None of these are policy based amendments. They are the policy's been set by that work last year. And these are really just to make sure we are finding finding everything to 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 track. So there were a few residential dimension standards that we needed to clarify related to setbacks on corner lots. The planning to development code had a couple of references to parking requirements, which we all got rid of, as well as some other old zones that were just missed with all the the work that we did last year. And then finally, the subarea updates, there were a number of of items that we found within there, including references to circle lot diameters, which we we eliminated, a few zones that needed to be cleared up, and then some clarification on some landscape buffering requirements, looking to just follow a a general standard and and other other items such as those. So all of that information is in the packet. Nothing has changed since we brought it to you last time. City council heard this earlier this week and had no no changes or amendments to what what you saw at your last study session. I'll pause there and allow for any public comments to be made, and then we'll continue on with the the findings section.
So we move on to see if there are any public comments. Since there is no public in the room, we don't have any live, and I understand there's no one in the Zoom space either. No. So seeing no public comments, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and move on to commissioner deliberations.
Yeah, and I I just I put the headers to the findings on the screen. Pretty standard, just runs through history, geography, a location, the proposed action, which lays out those specific code sections, as well as when we had meetings, how we noticed the the project and then the commerce and SEPA reviews.
And for anyone following along user pages, this begins at page one forty of the agenda packet. Any comments on those first pretty boilerplate sections of the finding conclusions and recommendations? Seeing nothing from the commissioners on that, let's move forward to the conclusions.
All right. So the conclusions, again, pretty straightforward, shown here on the screen as part of the packet. And just curious if if the commission has any any edits or additions that you'd like to see.
Commissioners, comments on the conclusions? As indicated, they are pretty straightforward. Seeing none, we'll move to the recommendation.
All right. So based on these findings, conclusions and the entire record, planning commission recommends city council adopt the proposed miscellaneous amendments included as exhibit A. And if there are any questions or edits to this section.
Commissioners, questions or edits? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the findings, conclusions and recommendations as presented in the agenda packet and to us this evening? Commissioner Lever?
Yeah, I I move to approve as presented.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the findings, conclusions and recommendations as presented. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Jones seconds the motion to approve findings, conclusions and recommendations. Any discussion around that motion? Seeing none, we will, I buried my, seeing none, we'll go up. Commissioner Lever, do you have a comment? Your hand is raised on Zoom.
Yeah, just just the same comment around the kind of really communicating this. And then also like I'm really excited to see how this is gonna get implemented and really the tracking of it. As we start seeing development or requests for actually start doing what we are hoping happens in our beautiful city, I'm definitely making sure that we understand what does that really look under day to day so that we can get reports out and then see how things are changing or not as we are hoping they do. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that comment. So again, since we're adopting a finding conclusion, recommendation to forward to council, I'll go through the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
I.
Commissioner Lever?
I.
Commissioner Robson?
I.
Commissioner Sills?
I.
And I also vote I, so the findings, conclusions and recommendations are unanimous unanimously by the commission. Thank you for your work on this and Planner Powers, we look forward to working with you on future items. Nice to have you aboard.
Thank you likewise.
All right. One more time. We will now move to a public hearing on the housing code amendments. I will open the hearing and we will begin with a staff presentation.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. Let me get the presentation up on the screen.
Oops. You could speak up a little. You were a little hard to hear there.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Let me commission, sorry. Tonight I'm here to present the final conclusions and recommendations for the middle housing code amendments. Sorry, I think there's a delay on the screen. May I wait a minute while we get this technical issue fixed? So sorry for the technical issues, one moment. Thank you for your patience. Yes, so as I mentioned tonight, we're here to present the findings and conclusions and recommendations for our middle housing code amendments. Planning commission will hold a public hearing and consider and hold a vote on the proposed drafts, finding conclusion and recommendations for the middle housing code amendments and either approve, approve with the revisions or deny. The final recommendation from the planning commission tonight will be provided to the city council. And so to give background of why we're here, the purpose of the middle housing code amendment, this project was initiated by staff as requested by city council in March of last year. The resolution of fourteen seventy three directed staff to develop these potential code amendments with a minimum development densities that permit more than four dwelling units per lot on all lots, so predominantly for residential use. And staff have prepared these drafts on the code amendments to allow up to six units per lot in residential zones. And so for findings? And so for findings, the proposed code amendments would apply citywide. These proposed code amendments would implement updates to the existing middle housing code to expand it to the RL zoning categories and to raise the maximum maximum number of allowed units from four to six. These proposed amendments include edits and updates and additions to the following sections, twelve oh six and twelve fourteen.
Yeah, we'll we'll pause here to allow any public comments to be made, and then we'll carry on with the findings, conclusions and recommendation conversation.
So part of the public hearing is seeking public comment before we act. As indicated previously, there are no members of the public in the audience. And I would like to confirm there is still no member of the public in the Zoom space. Nope. So seeing that, we would close the hearing on this for public comment and move on to commissioner deliberations on findings, conclusions and recommendations. And again, for those following along, these findings, conclusions, recommendations are paid, begin on page one fifty one to one fifty two of the agenda packet. Okay. Any comment on the findings? Pretty straightforward, pretty factual, boilerplate. Looking at my commissioners online and seeing no comments. I guess we'll move to the conclusions.
Yes, until the conclusions, he proposed middle housing code amendments have been drafted, noted and reviewed by the public and considered by the planning commission in accordance with the applicable laws of state of Washington and the city of Bothell. The middle housing code amendments are necessary to allow up to four base units on all parcels within the RL zoning aligning with council direction to expand housing opportunities in Bothell, and these code amendments are in the best interest of the public.
Commissioner comments? I'll say one of the things. I'll say, one of the things that we've discussed quite a bit in the commission is the need to increase the availability of housing in the city and affordable housing in particular. I think these amendments are responsive to that interest. So I want to thank you for doing that. Is there any interest in saying anything to that effect in our findings, conclusions, and recommendations? Okay, I guess we're good. So move to our recommendation.
Yes, and so that recommendation, based upon these findings and conclusions and entire record, the Planning Commission recommends the city council adopt the proposed middle housing code amendments as Exhibit A to these findings, conclusions, and recommendations.
All right. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve these findings, conclusions, and recommendations? Commissioner Robson?
Motion to approve things, conclusions, and recommendations as written?
All right. Is there a second? Commissioner Lever?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve these findings, conclusions, and recommendations as presented this evening and in the agenda packet. Any discussion around those findings, conclusions, and recommendations? Or around the motion, rather, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I'll again call a roll on this one. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Lever, do you have a comment? Your hand is
I just, I can, well, it's just the same comment around communicating this to our community in a way that can be understood and really like tracking the implementation of it is extremely important to avoid having, no, sorry, NIMBYism preventing us from reaching the goals that we're trying to. And at the same time, really hyper focusing on having those partnerships, particularly for affordable housing around securing public funds. And as we know, they're lacking more and more. So definitely making sure that we understand that we're going to need as many partners as possible to make this happen and proper around services as well. So, just personal comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Outreach and education on these very important issues is extremely important. So look forward to the staff continuing with that. So where was I? I guess we'll start. Commissioner Jones, did you?
Aye.
Commissioner Lever?
Aye.
Commissioner Robson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sills?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. The findings, conclusions, and recommendations are, the motion to approve the findings and recommendations is approved unanimously. Thank you for your work on this. As I indicated, this is a very important issue. We've discussed a lot about the need for housing, additional housing, and affordable housing, and I do think this helps us move forward with that goal. So thank you.
Thank you, commission.
And that concludes our public hearings for this evening. That might be a record for three hearings in one night. All right. Members, any remote reports from y'all? Seeing none, thank you. Reports from staff?
Only report from staff is the projected item next week, the Urban Forestry Management Plan. That will be coming as a special meeting to discuss that topic. After that, we'll have our regular meeting on November 5th. So no other news from staff.
All right. Well, then, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Come on now. Commissioner Robson?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Lever, I second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. We adjourned. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. The meeting is adjourned at 8:55 this evening. As Deputy Director Gates indicated, our next meeting will be October 22nd, a special meeting on a single item. So maybe I'll see some of you then. Have a good night. Thank you all.
Good night. Bye-bye.